Should we go without Solomon? Okay, Scott. Calling to order the regular city council meeting in Oak Park, Michigan, June 20th, 2022. It is 7:01 PM. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City, yes.
The Oak Park EZ roll is rolling by as we speak.
Oh, look at the EZ roll.
So I'm out of here.
That's cute. That's cute. Next, we have roll call.
Yes, Mayor McClellan.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Ed.
Here. Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Councilmember Radner.
Here.
Councilmember Whitehead.
Okay, we have quorum. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Sorry.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Number five is the consent agenda. These are presented for approval without discussion. As a single item, any council member can ask to have one dropped and considered separately. Regular council meeting minutes of June 20th, 2022. Request to approve payment of an invoice from OHM Advisors for eight-mile booster station rehabilitation and nine-mile road design engineering in the amount of $25,817. Recycling and Environmental Conservation Commission meeting minutes of May 19th, 2022. Request to declare listed vehicle surplus and sold by sealed bid, public auction, or disposal at the lowest expense to the city in accordance with city policy. And finally, licenses new and a renewal submitted for July 5th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you.
Right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. I don't see any elected officials waiting to speak, but we do have a special presentation, a special gift presentation by longtime Oak Park resident Stephen Gold. Please come up and make sure the green light's on over there.
Can you hear me?
Is the little green light on?
Ah, now it's bright.
There you go.
Okay, can you all hear me?
Yes.
I want to apologize in advance because my allergies and the medication I'm taking dry my throat a little, so I may be clearing my throat a lot. Please, don't worry, I'm not contagious. Madam Mayor, City Manager Tungate, Director Cooper, members of City Council, directors, and other city officials. May I ask Director Cooper to join me here at the podium? On June 19th, Michigan State Police responded to multiple calls of gunshots in the area of Oak Park, of Royal Oak Township, and Oak Park officers were later on called to assist. When troopers arrived, they located over 20 handgun and rifle shell casings. An SUV and two other vehicles had been hit, and there were two bullet holes in the front door of a home. The residents inside the home with the bullet holes in the front door were uncooperative, as were the vehicle owners. A group of people who had been there stated they had been outside all night long and heard and saw nothing. Right. This is why community policing and outreach are so important, so that citizens view police as partners in making residents safe, as opposed to being disliked, distrusted, and threatened. The Department of Public Safety's ice cream truck, we may be getting a picture up there. I don't know if Benny was able to find it. Has been a valuable tool, there it is, a valuable tool and a sterling example of community outreach. What little kid doesn't get a good feeling when an ice cream truck with police logos and a blue light bar stops and a friendly or uniformed police officer inside gives them a free ice cream? Heck, even adults like it. But the ice cream truck was cobbled together from various donated surplus equipment without real budgetary support, and the sound system showed it, and sometimes even required the officer to hold the wires together with her hands to make it work, hopefully while driving. So I, a regular city resident, underwrote the funding to upgrade the sound system in the truck to be modern, functioning, and reliable, because I felt this would be a small way to make a large contribution towards the Public Safety Department's community outreach. And I encourage others to think about how they might support the outstanding Public Safety Department that we have been blessed with. Director Cooper, it is my pleasure to present this check for $1,000 to you for the ice cream truck renovation, with any leftover amount to be used towards community policing.
We are so grateful to you for doing this.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council, and City Manager Tungate. Mr. Gold has been a longtime supporter and just a dear friend of public safety for decades. And to say that it does my heart well to accept this donation for such a worthy cause is an understatement. There's really not enough words to express, you know, how much he means to the community as well as to our department, and to acknowledge the efforts that we try and put forth in our community policing efforts. So from the entire Department of Public Safety and on behalf of the city, I just want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts, and absolutely our sound system hopefully will be not too loud, but heard clearly and regularly as we patrol the streets of summer.
I've already saw the demonstration, and you have to try it, and it's wonderful now. So it is my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We have the best residents. Item 7B is a relaunch presentation for GOV Q&amp;A.
Tim Chahorsky.
Tim Chahorsky.
Tim Chahorsky, our Resident Services Coordinator.
Tim Chahorsky. Did we get it right? Say it right.
Look, I'm going to just give you a brief presentation on what we've done so far with the relaunch of our GOV QA system. And I'm going to try to talk even louder, but I don't. All right, so we'll start with the timeline of how this whole process started. As you'll, I'm sure, remember, in 2021, the council adopted a strategic plan. Goal number three of that plan, I'm sure you remember, was to cultivate organizational excellence. Your objective one under that plan was to provide high-quality, friendly, responsive customer service. And objective two under that third goal was to use data to benchmark and analyze and assess the services annually provided by the city. In 2021, you created my position, the position of Resident Services Coordinator, and that position was filled in 2021. GOV QA was selected prior to my arrival to continue providing customer resource management services to the city, the system that has been used in the past and will continue to use. Extensive audit of the current system was then conducted. And here's what we found. What is GOV QA? It's a CRM system. It's a customer resource management system, can be used by residents, business owners, and the city staff, and Mayor can't hear me. There's three basic functions of the system. The residents and business owners, or anybody in the community, can ask questions, they can report issues, and they can request services. It's also a comprehensive collection of frequently asked questions. When we went through the relaunch of the system, the representative from GOV QA was very excited that we've been a customer of GOV QA for about 10 years, so we have a very, very robust selection of frequently asked questions that a lot of communities don't have, so it's a really great asset that we are able to provide.
Can you go back one, just for a second?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, functionality of GOV QA, what we're trying to provide is a one-stop shop for residents. What this means is a resident can come to the system, and they can ask questions, they can get their answers, they can get services provided to them without going anywhere else on the website. They really just need to go to this one area, and they should be able to get whatever they're looking for and what they need. It's going to allow us to update the resident and business owner pretty quickly. If they submit a request, we can immediately respond to them, and they'll get a response back in their email. It's going to allow us to create internal reports. If City Manager is asking for a report, he wants to know how many potholes were filled in the month of April, or where those were, we can very quickly go and get those reports for him. It's a tool for improved communication and education. What we're trying to do with the system is, when we give you the answer, you ask for a service, we're providing why we're doing things the way we are. And we also can provide, for example, links to the ordinance. If somebody's complaining that their neighbor's grass is too long, and TNP finds that's not the case, we provide them with the ordinance, they can read that, and they can see that the grass wasn't too long, and here's why. And then it also allows us to track the communications between staff and the resident. So this way, staff can prove that they did respond to the resident, and the resident can show us what they've asked of staff. And this is, oh, it's much bigger up there, perfect. So this is some of the things we changed. The top picture you see on the screen is what the portal looked like before we started. The bottom picture is what it looks like today. It's an improved use of, ease of use, it's a really weird sentence. We've added a FOIA tile on this page, so if a resident's coming to this area again in one-stop shop, they're going to be able to request their FOIA request right here. We added the online bill pay tile, and we added a mapping function to the bottom of that. I don't know if you can really see it there, but when I think-
Do you explain the mapping function?
I will, yes.
Yeah.
The mapping function is you can look at any current requests, and if you're reporting a pothole, you can look at the area on the map of the city, and you can see if that pothole you're reporting has been reported or not. And it shows you in real time right on the map where those requests are.
Can I just elaborate?
Yes.
Tim, if I could just elaborate a little bit on that. So if you are a resident and you've made a complaint about a pothole, you can go to the map, and you can see that somebody else has made the same complaint about the same pothole, and you can also see at what step in the process the resolution is.
Correct.
Which hopefully saves our residents' time, and of course, saves us time, too.
You should demonstrate that at one of the meetings.
I was just going to ask if you wanted a brief demonstration right now? Yes? Okay, so if you go to the city website, the very bottom of the page, you're going to see the Citizen Action Center, which actually changed the name to, that's not been done yet, we're waiting for the whole rebranding to be complete, but that name will change, it's going to be very easy to find, though. Click on here, it's going to bring you right to the page we showed you earlier. So, Madam Mayor, what kind of requests would you like to make?
Oh, pothole on my street, for sure.
Which there are a lot, but-
Yeah.
I guess we're going to go to request or report an issue here.
I don't get special service because I'm the mayor, just saying, drive down my street.
And then, before I get there, I'm going to show you everything, so we can show you here. So we've got all these selections here. So we've got a pothole maybe on the mayor's street. And the map is, it's going to show you exactly where you're at now, so it's showing City Hall. So we'll pretend a pothole's here.
So that one, if there was more than one complaint about it, there'd be more than one little red-
Well, actually, if I may, let me go back and show you this. So the mapping feature is located under the recently submitted requests. So this is again showing you all the requests in the city right now.
Now, we can't all read that, what does that say?
So what it's showing is, five days ago, there was a request for a street repair located in about the same area of the city as a tree maintenance. And those are both on the same street. All right, so I'll go back to that pothole that's on your street.
Tell us what you typed in, it's too small to see.
See, so what's it asking for is an email. It's really important that you do put an email in, because that's going to allow us to communicate back and forth with you. I think another thing worth mentioning, things such as abandoned vehicles, or long grass, or blight complaints, we've kept those anonymous. We'll get your information, but that's not going to publish on that map. That way, neighbors don't need to be fearful of being caught trimming in their neighbors for other issues. So don't be afraid to submit blight complaints, because we're going to know who you are, but your neighbors are not going to know who submitted that. If you can see this, I sent this to my personal email, so what the system now, what I'll see is that this pothole's been completed, this request has been completed, and I get this email with a tracking number, so I can then track it. And then, once the pothole's fixed, the system, and when, I'm sorry, the staff member who fixes it is going to, going to put that into GOV QA, and they're going to be able to send an automatic email to the resident who made the request.
Now, some things like, we used to have a lot more people working on trees, and we don't have so many people, so it can be several years before we get to trimming your tree. Is there a way that, like, we can know that our request is in there? It's just going to take quite a long time to get to it?
What will happen with the GOV QA system? They're going to get a confirmation just like this, saying that it's been recorded, and DPW is keeping track of all those. And so I understand that different types of trees can be trimmed at only certain times of year, so those are all taken into consideration as well once they've gone and looked at the tree.
What I noticed that's new is that Tim will get back to you and email you back, which is fabulous, because a lot of times in the old days, it felt like you're putting the complaint in a black hole, that you put the complaint in, and, well, nobody fixed it today, did they hear me, you know? But he gets back to you and lets you know what's going to happen, so that's been fabulous.
Do you think that's an important part of the new position that I'm in, is that somebody is able to say this is what's being done? In the past, that work was done, I just don't think there was that line of communication between the resident and the city, and now there is.
Madam Mayor, if I could.
What's that?
It also, I just wanted to add, you know, that definitely, you know, the city's communication with its residents and business owners is paramount to everything that we're trying to do. So I don't want to take away from, you know, our employees getting back with calls and requests that they receive. However, this system really is designed, and Tim is really in his position to be another resource, and a resource that we can use to quantify and allocate funding towards. You know, one of the reporting structures, council members, you're going to see more of, is that we are going to couple this reporting with our quarterly reporting, our quarterly financial reporting and so forth, so that we can see real results in real time, and on an annual basis, we can then appropriate our resources towards the areas that we think we're missing.
Wow.
I can definitely entertain any other questions, if there are any.
Anyone in council have a question about the new system? We're delighted to have you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Delighted. Do you have your number that people can call if they have an issue?
Yes, that's also on the website.
It's where?
It's on the website.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. See, we are down to item 13 ordinances. First reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 6, alcoholic liquors, Article 3, regulation of on-the-premises consumption of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Oak Park, Michigan by amending Sections 652, 654, 655, 656, 658, 659, and 668 thereof. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you so much. Would our city attorney please just explain this ordinance?
The changes to the ordinance are going to be consistent with the recent amendments to the zoning ordinance, where we are going to allow Class C liquor licenses in the city of Oak Park. We are also removing the requirement that businesses sell a percentage, a specific percentage of food in their revenue, and we are also building in review processes for council to follow when these establishments renew their licenses every year, to allow council to have some oversight and ensure that the businesses are complying with Michigan law with respect to managing and maintaining their license.
Any questions for the city attorney? Are you ready to vote? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Burns.
Yes.
Mayor McClellan.
Yes.
Councilmember Radner.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. City Manager Eric Tungate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I would like to ask Deputy City Manager of Community Services Crystal Van Black to join me at the podium, 15A, please.
So I am coming back to you with the next step-
Push the button again.
A rookie move. Good evening. Tonight, I'm coming back to you with the next step in the process of the pilot program for e-scooters. So if you remember, one of your objectives in the strategic plan is to offer affordable mobility options. Staff has been exploring ways to expand mobility options within the community. Shared e-scooters are a popular form of micro-mobility in other communities, and we believe they may be an option for expanding affordable mobility options in ours. At the council meeting on February 21st, City Council approved a shared micro-mobility pilot program request for proposals. After the approval, the city released the RFP and received one proposal from Bird Rides, Inc., or Bird Scooters, if you guys are familiar with those. We have reviewed their proposal, as well as several other pilot program agreements in other Michigan communities. Simultaneously, we engaged the public through a survey. We also held an open house in April to gather public feedback to help guide the terms of a draft agreement. From there, we've created a draft pilot program agreement that has been reviewed and approved by our city attorney. We are recommending a pilot program of 12 to 18 months, so that we, I'm sorry, so that we may evaluate the impact of e-scooters in the community throughout the year. Further, we're recommending that council grant City Manager Eric Tungate approval to negotiate an agreement with Bird Ride, Inc., to participate in our pilot program. We have attached the draft pilot agreement, and this is the one that's been approved by, has been reviewed, and we've worked on it with, in coordination with our attorney. It's recommended that City Council authorize City Manager to negotiate a pilot program agreement with Bird Rides, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
I love this.
You're quick.
I love this.
This is cute.
I'm really excited about this.
Let me ask you, what is costing the city for the 12 to 18 months?
This would cost zero to the city. Actually, there's, what we're proposing is a fee structure, I shouldn't say a fee structure, the ability to pull back, pull costs from Bird for things if we have to expend costs. So for instance, we're proposing that if they do not move a scooter, for instance, and our staff has to go out there, that we can actually recoup costs from them. So there would be no cost to the city, though.
Like, if somebody leaves it, how long do they have?
What we're proposing, let me make sure I don't misspeak. We are proposing, I should also note, the reason that we're, the motion is to negotiate is that we believe, once we provide Bird with our proposed draft agreement, there will probably be some back and forth, and that's why, that's why what we're proposing is that you give City Manager the opportunity to negotiate an agreement, which would then be reviewed by our city attorney. They may have some pushback on things, but we're very, I think that we're all very stern in what we want in our agreement with them, and what we think is best for the community. So, one of the things that we've put in this draft agreement is that the company shall respond to requests for rebalancing, reports of incorrectly parked scooters, or reports of unsafe, inoperable scooters by relocating, reparking, or removing the scooters as appropriate within two hours of receiving a notice.
Two hours?
Two hours.
Madam Mayor, if I could, too, just one thing that Crystal had mentioned. If that is not complied with, then a rebalancing cost that would be otherwise borne by the city could be recouped as part of a cost recovery piece of this agreement that we could negotiate with them.
Questions?
Just a comment, something I, I'm pretty sure Bird does this already, I imagine they're going to do it here. One of the ways that they encourage, or I should say discourage, people from just leaving them around is when you park it, you got to take a picture, and if, obviously, you dump it somewhere, you could very well get charged for that. And also, they pay people to charge them.
To do what?
To charge them.
Yes.
So what happens is, at the end of the day, people go out and actually gather them up, and then plug them in and charge them, and then put them wherever they're supposed to be. to be the next day. And it's just, it's a, I thought it was pretty ingenious, the way they came up with those, with those things.
It is.
So assuming they do that here, I don't think we're gonna have an issue.
So the question is, are, you know, are there enough of us interested in doing this to make it with the while, and that's what, one of the things we'll evaluate at the end of 12 to 18 months?
Absolutely, yes. Yeah.
I'm ready.
Ready to vote?
Madam Mayor, I, I do wanna ask one question before your vote, which is, is it council's preference that after, if you do vote affirmatively to allow me to negotiate this, is it council's preference that after that, I come back to you with a completed agreement for your vote?
Yes, please, that's what I would prefer.
Okay.
We have a roll call then.
Mayor McClellan.
Yes.
Councilmember Radner.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead.
Yes.
Councilmember Burns.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Kim, I'm gonna do one more item before you, hold on one second. Councilmembers, I would like to ask Director Steve Cooper to join me at the podium, and I wanted him, he very graciously agreed to speak about public safety at large events, and I think we all know that the events that occurred just the other day in Highland Park, Illinois are certainly cause for concern. Director Cooper, if you could speak to that, I would very much appreciate it.
Absolutely, city manager, that'd be my pleasure. Obviously, there's been a constant buzz as you look at the various media outlets and, as well as social media, about some of the tragedies that have been occurring throughout the country recently, and some not so recent. I mean, it's been going on for far too long, but the recent set of events that, like I said, that we, city manager just alluded to in Illinois, has really caused a lot of concern, and it's caused some concern, I think, amongst our, our residents as well, so that's totally understandable. I understand why people will be nervous and a little apprehensive about attending certain recreational and, and social gatherings, but I wanted to come before council, for the city manager, and for the community, to hopefully assure them that their safety in this community is and will always be public safety's number one priority. As a public safety department, and as public safety officers, obviously, when we dawn our badge and we take the oath of office, we make a pledge to this community, that we will protect this community with our lives, and we will always honor, honor that pledge. Public safety, like I said, obviously is, is the number one, uh, resource for any community to be successful. Before you do anything else, if you can't secure and have a safe community, then, then what's the purpose? I just wanna say also that every single officer that we have on this department is highly trained in various tactics, including unfortunately, some of the active assailant, active shooter incidents. We constantly rehearse our tactics frequently, and not only this department, but also, we train with departments throughout Oakland County. Pretty much every single department in the Oakland County region here has been trained in those various tactics, and we train together, and we stand together 24 hours a day, seven days a week, ready to respond wherever and whenever need be to assist any community that may, you know, fall victim to such violence and nonsense. We're always vigilant and monitoring our surroundings at our events, and that's, that's, that's a huge key. But we can't do that alone, you know, I come before you too, saying that the, the community, we've always had a great partnership with our community, and that is really the key as far as partnering with the community, and we ask that the community be just as vigilant and report anything that they may see that looks out of order. Goes back to saying, see something, say something. Too often, we have situations where I talk to residents and they say, man, you know, I saw something that kinda looked out of place, and, you know, I wanted to say something, but I didn't really know, I didn't wanna waste public safety's time, or I didn't, for the sake of looking or sounding foolish or being silly, you know, I didn't make the call. And, you know, if I could implore you, please, please, never take that attitude, you know, you're, the purpose of our existence is to serve the community, and without the help from the community, and without you guys reporting those incident and let us come out there and investigate it, you know, we, we would have our hands full. We would rather come out 100 times than 100 times, it'd be nothing than that one time you overlook something, and then, obviously, we have to come out and deal with a tragedy or a situation that we, we've been faced with just yesterday at the Fourth of July parade that they had in Illinois. Just to kinda illustrate that point as well, yesterday, we had our Fourth of July parade here in the city of Oak Park, and we always make it a, a purpose to have a strong show of police presence, and that's to assure the community and the residents, we want you to feel safe, and it gives us an opportunity to interact with the community on a positive level. But in, in doing that, like I said, one of our main purposes is to make you feel safe when you're moving about the community and enjoying the various amenities, and I couldn't think of a better example than yesterday's parade, followed by the festivities with the fun, the music, the food, games in the, in the park. Couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago, we had our summer blast, which was a three-day event, that turned out extremely well, and I pretty much had all available resources deployed to that event around the clock from start to finish. There were some other communities around the area, I won't call out names, that had ran into some issues and had to actually shut down their, their, their summer festival, and this being the first one, we actually expanded to the point where we had rides, wanted to make sure that it was, it came off very successful, and a large part, I, I think of that being successful was the fact that we had a really large show of force, and it gave our officers an opportunity to go out and intermingle with the public. I know the company that actually put on the event had, Lori had sent me an email, Lori Stazak, our director of recreation, had sent me an email and had just mentioned that the, the owners of the, of the event had said that this was the first time they've been out where they've had a, a public safety department that was so actively engaged with the community and coming around, just having a really festive time. They've been in other communities where officers wouldn't even get out of the cars, and, uh, obviously, it didn't lead to a success, so.
Bravo.
So, like I said, I, I won't take up any more of your time, I just wanted to kinda reiterate those points. Like I said, I know a lot of people are nervous right now and, and concerned, but I just wanted to assure you, as long as I'm the director of this department, you can rest assured that we'll never let this community become paralyzed with fear to the point where you are not able to go out and enjoy the amenities of the city of Oak Park. It's a wonderful city, like I said, I love this city, I've been here for 32 years, and it seems like it's just been five, but it's close to my heart, and, like I said, and we'll protect it with, with whatever resources we have to, so. Just wanted to reiterate that to the city manager.
Thank you, Director Cooper. Thank you so much for doing that, thank you. Okay, I would like to ask Director Kimberly Maroney to join me at the podium for 15B, please.
Thank you, city manager Tungate. Good evening, mayor, city council members. In front of you tonight is a resolution to approve purchasing the tax foreclosed properties that we have with Oakland County. We received the final list. Originally, we thought it was gonna be a lot more, since they haven't done it in two years. Three ended up on the list. As you know, we've been doing this since 2015, and we've been able to turn a lot of our rental properties into homeowner-occupied homes, which is a requirement of the program, as well as actually beautify the homes and improve them. Each investor puts $35,000 as a minimum into each home, and if it's a vacant lot, we'll build a new home. So it's helped us build our tax base and improve our property values as well. So I came to you a few weeks ago to approve the developer that we've used essentially since the beginning. He's one of a few that we've used, and it's FPJ Investments. So I recommend tonight that we approve the resolution to purchase the tax foreclosed, foreclosed properties from Oakland County.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion or questions?
Just a comment.
Yes.
I recall when this program was first piloted, and it has been successful, so I'm happy that we're continuing along with it.
Yeah.
I remember the very first time out, the building department was watching these guys like a hawk. They were out there every day checking it out, and they came back with a little surprise, but good reports, that these guys were meeting and exceeding expectations. So we've been very pleased to have owners coming to Oak Park. Let's see, are we ready for a vote? Yep, roll call, please.
Councilmember Radner.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead.
Yes.
Councilmember Burns.
Yes.
And Mayor McClellan.
Yes, motion carried, thank you.
Thank you, Kim. And finally, 15C, deputy city manager Crystal Van Black, please.
Good evening again. Tonight, I have for you an agreement between the city of Oak Park and the city of Southfield for our swimming pool use. And city manager, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit first, or do you want me to?
I do, but I, I don't know that we will have to wait, according to Lori earlier, so I don't wanna say it yet, so.
Okay, got it.
I probably should now, though, that we brought it up.
Sorry.
No, no, it's okay, it's okay.
I just thought the question may arise.
So, council members, it, you know, this is getting into, what we're talking about is getting into the mechanical failure at the pool. Unfortunately, we spent all of these resources, all this time, trying to, to be the one pool in the area to attract lifeguards, and we were successful, only to then open up for a few days and have a mechanical failure. So unfortunately, the parts and all of the rest of it that go with repairing this failure could take up to four weeks of time. However, the good news, I think, hopefully, is that we may have, be able to find a solution before that to, to keep things going while we wait for the part to come. So, we're not, are we officially closed as of right now?
We're still officially closed as of right now, but one of the other things that we've talked about is possibly staying open longer, and Lori was prepared to speak to that, was ready for us to speak about that. Wanted to throw that out there, though, before we talk about this agreement, because it, there might have been questions as to why we were doing the agreement if the pool was closed, but there's hope.
Let me, let me just elaborate on something you said. So if in fact, we do have to close for an extended period like this, we are going to possibly make a recommendation to keep the pool open longer in the year than we normally would, to make up for some of that time, unfortunately. Okay.
With that, what we have in front of you today is an agreement with the city of Southfield. The city of Southfield has temporarily, temporarily closed their pools, or their outdoor municipal pool for evaluation, and Southfield residents do not have access to its outdoor municipal pool dur, during the closure this summer. This agreement would allow Southfield residents to use the city of Oak Park's pool at the residence, at the residence rate with proof of Southfield residency. The Oak Park's pool staff will create a tabulation for their swimmers to maintain an accurate count for each of our swim sessions. The city of Southfield will then provide payment to the city of Oak Park for the difference between the swimmer, the resident and non-resident rate, so the, so the city of Southfield would be making up that gap. In addition to that, you'll, you'll see in the agreement that there are, what they're calling Southfield Days, and that's really just them paying for the rental of our pool when we normally offer rental hours. So we have hours in the evening time where we offer for anyone to rent the pool out for personal use, so when you, if you've seen any, any, any talk about Southfield Days, 'cause they've actually said something on their website, that's just what that is. So they would just be paying for us to, to rent the pool out. So the request is that city council approve this agreement between the city of Oak Park and the city of Southfield upon final review and approval from the city attorney. I should note, the one thing that would change in the agreement that's in front of you right now is the dates, for obvious reasons.
Yeah, I noticed that too. So how late would it go? What's the contract gonna say?
We, so the final review by our city attorney would include the revision of the dates, when we know what that looks like.
Gotcha, okay.
So we are constantly, as the city manager was just talking about, we're, we are literally in the midst right now of kind of figuring all of that out, but we wanted to have this, this agreement in place, so that when we do figure it out, we can, we can move forward with it.
I'm all for it.
So we need a motion to approve this use agreement with Southfield?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Make the motion in second, good. Any further discussion or questions?
We're being good neighbors, that's good.
Yes, it is lovely. I love regional anything.
Madam Mayor, if I could, this also sort of mimics our interlocal agreements with Hazel Park and Ferndale as well, so it's built along the same lines.
Nice, nice. That's great. Ready to vote? Yeah.
Councilmember Whitehead.
Yes.
Councilmember Burns.
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor McClellan.
Yes.
Councilmember Radner.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Okay, Madam Mayor, members of council, that completes the city manager report for this evening, thank you.
Thank you, city manager Tungate, and we are now at call to the audience. If you've, if you'd like to come up and talk, please, uh, use the mic up here, give us your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Madam Mayor, I have several people who would like to speak.
Yes.
Idella Atkins. Did I say that right?
Oh, that's, good evening, my name is Idella Atkins, I'm at 21140 West Hampton. And tonight, I'm here, and I just have one thing that I wanted to ask, and I wanted to just quickly make a little statement. Oak Park is a small, diverse, um, community priding itself on proximity to many beautiful suburban and cultural, and cultural institutions. With that being said, it is believed that the appearance of city blight will mar the reputation and value of Oak Park and surrounding areas. Therefore, I'm seeking to petition our city council members to please consider an amendment on the ordinance 0-22-719 division 3. And I wanted to say that I know that it is a, it's something that the city council would have to agree with, but I know that they will not necessarily be authorized to actually amend this segment, because it becomes a legal issue. But what I was doing, I was researching to find out whether this particular segment of the ordinance, whether it even existed in Michigan. It does not. But I did find that it does exist, and it has been amended in another state. And what it was is that the residents are accountable for like the front portion of their home, but they are not held accountable for the back portion of the home. But I did find an amendment that was an ordinance that was amended, and it was amended actually in Virginia, and what they did is, the city council did agree that outgrowths of shrubs that could grow into trees would fall under the category of trees, and the city took aim at the overgrowth. And what they did is, they agreed that it was necessary and needed, and they approached the state legislation to give approval to amend the ordinance, and it was amended, and it was, went into effect July 2020. And it then became something that was legal, that they could actually hold the homeowner accountable for the front and the back. And that went into effect, and the intent was to bring a copy of the amendment, and what it actually says, the state legislation gave a clout to have it amended when shrubs grew into trees and went out of control. And what they, one of the things that they indicated is, the reason why they considered it, is because they found that the outgrowth caused increases.
If you could finish up.
Okay. It, it caused an increase in rodents, insects, it was health hazardous, it is also fire, fire hazardous. And I bought a copy, and I would like to leave it, and ask you, would you please consider just glancing at what they looked at in the determination and the process that they were? went through in order to have it amended, and it was done? It went into effect, and it's effective right now.
Yep.
Went into effect July of 2020.
Tim will bring it up.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for all your research.
Thank you.
That would be, I think our code officers would be happy with that.
Madam Mayor, next, I have a card from Ed Bass. No, you don't need it, okay? And then Esther Ingber.
I thought you meant Sarah.
Okay, great.
Ed, do you have something? No?
No, I don't have it.
And Esther, anything to say?
No.
Well, I'm here satisfied with the.
Come, come up to the mic, so, 'cause.
It's not.
Say it again.
You don't have to. It's completely up to you. But if you want to, you gotta do it for the mic.
Yeah.
Hi, Esther Ingber, 25961 Marlow Place.
Is the mic on? Is the little green light on? There you go.
Hello?
Is it on now?
Tap it a couple times. Esther Ingber, 25961 Marlow Place. I had concern about what our public safety department was doing in the wake of the Fourth of July shooting, and feel like Officer Cooper. As long as I'm a parent, I wanna say that I have had reasons to use the 911 service in our city several times in the last few years, unfortunately, and it very good service. We came promptly, and it was stuck forward. I do appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Yes. He does have cards, and he's carding them. Yeah. Nobody else? Everybody's happy? That's good. You wanna come up? Nope. All right. Next is call to council, and all I wanna do is rave, first about the public safety presence at the, the three-day event, the fun three-day event that we had. Officers are there to, as a show of force, and to, and to be friendly with the residents who are there. And it was wonderful. And the idea that the vendor noticed that our city was outstanding compared to other cities should make us all stand up a little taller. So, that was wonderful. Then, there was the Fourth of July event. We had fun with the mayor's run. Next year, come on and sign up. You don't have to run. You can walk, push a stroller, take a walker, limp, anything. Come on down and join in the, the fun. Then, we had the pancake breakfast that benefits youth assistance, Oak Park Youth Assistance, our teens who needed a little hand. And it was wonderfully attended, elegantly done. There was a whole bunch of things to, to bid on in the middle, and I think somebody won lunch with the mayor. So, it was a wonderful event. The parade was flawless. Councilmember Radner bought a gazillion of those popsicle things that are in plastic baggies like.
Freeze Pops.
Freeze Pops, thank you. And he had a team of his kids and their friends and associates running as fast as they could to pass them out to people, and we got a lot, almost everybody got one. I never saw anything get covered that well in all the years that I've seen parades. So, bravo. Thank you for your donation, and.
It wasn't just me. There was a team effort. We all chipped in for these.
Yes.
Just so everybody's aware. But thank you for the shout-out.
Yes, yes. And the, the legwork was done by Radner and associates this year. So, bravo, and thank you. Councilmember Burns.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. I love to see the audience filled with our residents, and I'm always encouraging people to come to the City Council meetings. That way, you always know what's going on. I encourage you to go to the website and read your newsletters and the Oak Park Magazine. In regards to the Fourth of July parade, I was very happy that we were able to present it this year, after not having it since 2019. And it was a, a very good turnout. I enjoyed myself, had a lot of residents, and I, only knowing that each year is gonna get bigger and bigger and better and better till we get back to the greatness that we were at. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Radner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Happy belated Fourth to everybody. It's good to see such a large crowd here tonight. It was a beautiful event. It was lovely. Something that I think a lot of people didn't even know happened, just since we're talking about our public safety officers, there was actually somebody who passed out from the heat, one of the teen dancers from MLK. And our public safety was there on scene, present company included, and tended to this teenage girl and helped her until Alliance arrived, and ultimately, they took her to the hospital. So, yeah, we do have excellent, excellent public safety. I say it all the time. I unfortunately see the good, the bad, and the ugly when it comes to law enforcement, and I know that we've got some of the best out there. Also, it's good to know that we're being such good neighbors with Southfield. I know that they do the same for us. We have such good friends there. I personally have some good friends there, like, you know, Dawn King, their lawyer, second-best lawyer around.
After you?
No, 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 no. Second-best city attorney.
Oh, oh.
After our, after ours.
Oh, okay.
And it's good that we, it's good that we get to be such good neighbors with them. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitehead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanna echo my fellow council members, Fourth of July was just wonderful in our city. So awesome. I'm a little sore from the mayor's 5K. I did run that. So, with that, everybody have a good night.
His fiancee meddled, and he didn't, so he had to take a lot of heat at home. Thank you, and good night.